I'm gonna go ahead and call them, call the meeting to order. And we have a quorum present, so I'll go ahead and say the prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity for us to gather together to serve the people of Eastland. Lord, we just ask your guidance, we ask your wisdom as we deal with the county's business, as we deal with the county's finances, as we deal with the county's personnel and with the resources. Lord, we thank you for another day that you've given us here on planet earth. Lord, and thank you so much for the gift of your son that died on the cross for our sins. In Christ's name we pray, amen. My pleas are leaving.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with eternal justice for all.
All right. We got like two of these now. Uh, our consent agenda. You guys have had an opportunity to go over this deal. Ms. Loretta, I'll let you tell everybody what you need to tell them.
Okay, and on the personnel report, you each have a copy?
I'm gonna start with the minutes.
Of the minutes.
Yeah, the minutes.
Minutes from April 24th is what I have.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, that's all part of the consent agenda.
It's all part of consent, we do it all together.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just giving you an opportunity to tell us what, announce what figures you need to announce.
Uh, you all have the personnel report and the budget amendments, and I don't think there's anything I need to go over on those. Um, I will start with the March financial report.
We didn't get them.
We did not get those.
You did not get those?
We did not get those, and we didn't get the amendment changes by fund.
Well then, let's skip them.
Yeah, we didn't get them. I, I asked David this morning about, because I didn't get the financial report.
Okay. Okay. Well, in that case, I'm finished.
I swear to do it.
Oh, the department financials? Uh, the, oh, I need those back. But the department financials for each of the departments, do you have a list of what Kathy had?
Yes, let me see here, Loretta. She has the DMV for four seventeen and four twenty-four, Constable one and two, County Clerk, JEA, Justice of the Peace one, two, and four, Sheriff and District Clerk.
Hey, they, uh, that would have been second quarter report for the fire department, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we do. Yeah.
Uh, do I have it?
Uh...
Do you know when we got it?
Uh, April 5th? Well, just, just to keep from hollering at Shelby from 20 yards away, I just went ahead and sent it to you, so. Okay, I'm sorry. Where you, where you at?
Um, I'm on D, bill claims and accounts. Uh, we have seven sets. The first one is May 4th health reimbursement arrangement, employee reimbursement. Then we have gross wages from payroll on the 28th. Then all payables for payroll, April 28th payroll other than workers' comp and unemployment. There's payments to Tyler out of the ARPA funds. Then a payment to Eastland County Water Supply District for dam improvements out of grants fund. Comm data payables to be paid today and regular payables for today.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're not gonna, we, we don't need to do E or F. Well, we don't have to do E because we, we sat there and talked about that. So, do we have anything under F?
Yes, you should have a, a list under F. Oh, and that's for the bills.
I'm doing both, doing the computer and the...
And I can just read them into the minutes?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that, because I don't have the...
She says she has three.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Kobe Cordero, Brendan Finch, and Rebecca Rainey.
She didn't, she didn't say which ones.
Okay.
Um, but she had three.
That's the three I have.
Okay.
Okay. We ready to do our consent? Okay, motion by?
I'll make it to it.
Motion by Mr. Raines.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let me get all this stuff signed.
Ms. Loretta, how's the training going?
Uh, Tyler?
Yes, ma'am.
We go live today, so we'll see if the training stuck.
Yeah, okay.
We met the representative down there, love, Ms. Loretta.
Oh, really? Who'd you meet?
Y'all, Lee, he got me on that, and I can't remember the guy's name, but, uh...
I got an email from him after we got back.
He was a nice guy.
Can't even think of the word he named.
Kirk Cunningham?
Definitely been in.
Yeah, it kinda sounded that.
He is a nice guy.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, I'm sorry.
No.
Yep, Kirk Cunningham.
There was another, well, what county was that that was wanting to go in there and talk to him? Andy, me and he was out there. Because they was having the same problem that day, remember? He was wanting to get in there and talk to him right quick. I can't remember what county it was.
It wasn't Stevie, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Was it Stevie?
Yes, sir.
That's close to home.
Yep, last one again.
They're on that day or two.
Yeah, tell me. So, item four, burn ban. I talked to yesterday, I texted three different chiefs, three different parts of the county, and they said they were fine with the burn ban staying off. What's the pleasure of the court?
That's fine.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, B, nine eleven update and corporate dispatch update.
Nothing at this time, Judge.
All right. Uh, do we have Mr. Jernigan here today? There he is, back there in the back. Larry, why don't you come up? Larry, instead of us letting, deciding to let you resign, we decided to fire you instead. The Dern, uh, the Dern paperwork's a whole lot easier. Larry, thank you for your years of service, and, uh, uh, we're issuing a proclamation that all the, myself and all the commissioners will do uh, for recognizing you for your, for your effort. Says whereas Constable Larry Jernigan Senior has decided to retire from his career in law enforcement on April 30th of 2023, and whereas Constable Jernigan began his career at Eastland Police Department and then transitioned to an 18-year career at the Cisco Police Department where he served honorably, and whereas Constable Jernigan then served as an Eastland County Constable for another 18 years, and whereas Constable Jernigan served the public for over 36 years as a distinguished law enforcement officer, and now therefore, the Eastland County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim our appreciation on May the 8th, 2023 to Eastland County Constable Larry Jernigan Senior for his many years of service to Eastland County and to the state of Texas, and urge the appropriate recognition thereof, and this is signed in our official capacity. Larry, thank you for everything.
Thank you very much for your recognition. Thank all of you for it.
You've made my job a whole lot easier just in being around and bailiffing and...
I've enjoyed it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
On that retirement. You know, they say you work harder when you retire.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta get you, I gotta sign for, for Kathy, because it's a, it's a test at the bottom.
If you will let me have that, I'll frame it for you.
I bet, okay.
Not saying he's old or anything, but he took me on my very first search warrant when I was in high school.
Was it to your house?
No, it wasn't my house. They weren't gonna let me go, and he said, no, he's riding with me, he's going.
Uh, well, no, Loretta said she would.
Okay. You would frame it?
Yeah, if you'll get it back to me, I'll get a frame.
We just need to get a copy of it. Do what? Sure.
Now, do you want a little take a picture of her?
Right, come over here.
Do you want me to take one with your phone?
Sure.
That means commissioners.
I'm boss, you can in there, please.
You can do those classes.
She's thinking it all. Okay, buddy. All right, thank you.
Well, your dog's gotta get one.
Oh, yeah.
Geez.
And she goes over backwards.
Balls down.
All right.
I think that was a crack at the commissary.
Appreciate it, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I just get a selfie?
Sorry.
Yeah, well, he used to all fit up there, but apparently there's somebody bigger enough for it.
Yeah, yeah, somebody needs to go to the hospital.
Well, we're probably gonna do this again, because... The next item.
Yeah, once I do that.
Uh, okay. Is Donnie?
Yeah, I forgot about the seal, so once I put the seal on it, I'll, okay, I'll get it too.
Hey, Linda, was Donnie gonna come up here and talk to us about the disposal of county property? Is that on sale? Hey, Shelby?
He has a list.
Okay. Do you know whether Donnie was gonna come up here about the item on the agenda?
Larry, Larry.
What? I started, uh, May of 2005.
I'm going out, May of 2023. Uh, let's just, we can, we can talk about it. D is discuss and consider disposal of county property. I don't know if Donnie needed to be up here or not, um...
You want me to call him?
Uh, no, I think, uh...
There was a list, he must have sent, Judge.
Yeah, no, he, there was. Let's see.
He said he can't make it, he's got some people here that he's talking to, so he said he could just...
Is he interviewing for another job, or what, what's that?
He tried to get thrilled out, too.
Yeah. No, thank you. So, the, you, there's a list, should be in all of y'all's files about the different stuff that was in there. And Donnie's indicating that all items except six will be destroyed by the Eastland Recycle and Scrapyard, and money will be donated to the Crime Victim Assistance Center. So, this is just a bunch of very old, old things that are down there.
So, the court will need to declare it salvage?
Mm-hmm.
And give Donnie permission to recycle?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion, motion by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um... E, appointment of new constable precinct one. Daryl? Come on up here, so we can talk to you. For you guys that don't know, this is Daryl Dyer. Daryl, have a seat, man. Might as well get used to getting called up here. Daryl, tell, tell the, the court about your background.
Most of it's been in law enforcement since 1976.
Yeah, well, I mean, they just hit your law enforcement highlights.
I started out at the city police and, and, and county deputy sheriff for I don't know how many years. And then 20 years as a state game warden, and then went to work here, of course, as a security. And here I am again.
Just can't leave.
Was just, uh, was happy until I called him.
About a little 38 years is his license.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, I interviewed, uh, I think four people? Four other candidates, and, uh, Daryl's the one that, uh, it would be my recommendation to fill this position. Uh, he's, he's got a lot of, uh, stuff that he's gonna have to catch up with your, some of your hours, I think. According to T. Cole, and, and you got with Lynn Beer as well.
I've talked to him.
Yeah, have you talked to him recently?
A week or so ago, yeah.
A week or so ago, and Sheriff, what, what did? Uh, we gotta figure out, I guess, who, is there a, a deal where, uh, I know T. Cole changed a lot of that stuff on the background and verifying all that, all that's... Okay, that'll be good. Thank, thank you for doing that.
Well, I didn't know, uh, T. Cole told me I had to go through all the psychological and all that business again, but I don't know.
Yeah, well, that could be, uh...
Daryl's gonna come over after the meeting, we've got a couple things to do, and we'll call T. Cole by now.
All right, thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate that. Anyway, this would be, uh, my, my recommendation is that we appoint here for the unexpired term, and that we also designate him as the local rabies control authority, the R.C., LRCA for the unincorporated areas in Eastland. If there's any questions or anything, I can answer. Uh, this would be effective today.
I'm, I'm sure Judge.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Raines, seconded by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Constable? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And...
And we're gonna get you...
Let's see, we got several for you to sign here, Daryl, that one. And then, this will be, if you want to minister his oath, Judge.
Okay. It won't be the last time he's sworn it.
And you'll sign right there, Daryl.
Yeah, after you get through signing.
Yes.
All right, go ahead and stand up for a half second. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
Daryl Dyer.
Daryl Dyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of.
Constable Precinct One.
Constable Precinct One.
Which is an unexpired term.
An unexpired term.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Constable? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You need to sign first.
You have not done that, but you get relegated.
Oh, yeah.
And Donna, I will need a copy of the oath and bond, because we cannot pay Constable Dyer until we have it.
Okay.
And I'm sure he would like a paycheck to go with that title.
Oh, I didn't tell him he was getting paid, Loretta.
I'm sorry, I slipped up.
I told him it was the right thing to do.
And I didn't, and I didn't know I was getting the rabies thing. Well, I think we talked about that.
And you get the next $1,600 for doing this.
Wow.
Judge Judy, do you want a picture with the commissioners and Daryl place?
All right.
I used to do that. We will need a motion to approve his bond.
Okay.
Of Judge, whenever you want to do it.
Uh, we'll do that real quick. We, uh, we need a motion to approve his bond.
Okay.
As Commissioner.
You got it.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, by Mr. Ramsey. Seconded by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Oh, this is for the judge to sign. We'll get him to sign it after this. They want your picture.
And this does not qualify as your, as your ID picture.
This is a lineup.
Suck it in the sand.
Gathered. All right, if I look his way. Start it straight here. Got those bookshelves behind me, really giving me a... Straight, little shows. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more pictures that we gotta take today?
David, you want your picture, Ray?
I don't know if this is being reported or not, but I'm gonna go with the camera probably no longer works.
Judge, will you sign that? That's the end of his bond.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so new constables, uh, come here, ain't got a badge and a gun on yet. But he's got one, but he's got one close. We're on G. Depository bid committee to present decision on depository contract award. Ms. Key.
Um, Judge Holam, Christina Doddrell, and I met, went over the bids that were presented. You should each have the scoring sheet that we use, and it's really not a scoring sheet, it's just an analysis. Um, what we compared in the three bids was the interest-bearing checking accounts and saving accounts, the rates that each were getting, the money market accounts, fixed maturity CD rates that we were getting, or that they were offering. Um, and then you have the breakout of less than 30 days all the way to two years. Um, fixed maturity CDs, 250,000 and over, and again, it's broken down by maturity term. Service, services provided fees, uh, services provided all three, provided all services, and then the fees by each bid. And, and I want you to know, this was a difficult decision. We didn't make the decision based on interest rates alone, because as you know, those fluctuate. Fed raised rate last week, there's speculation they're gonna drop it again before the end of the year. Um, we considered interest rates they were offering. We considered the services provided. We considered what the county is going to have to pay for. Um, and you'll see at the bottom, we also considered employee time and employee mileage. Um, and there were factors in each that we were looking at. Um, and again, interest was not what we were bas- basing our decision on. Um, so after all the consideration, the committee chose First Financial Bank. And Judge Holam and Christina, y'all can pop in anytime.
One of the things, of course, I was kind of new to the, new to this part of the process, but one of the things that I had a pretty long conversation with, uh, Loretta and Christina is that saying this is how much money that you, you potentially could make on interest, because our interest may be a little bit higher than another deal, it has to take into account that you're gonna maintain the same levels of money, and that's actually computed out for a year. So, if you, if the interest rates drop during that time period, then this, the imaginary number that you just quoted me is not really a, it's not really a deal. So, uh, that was, that was a deal, and I, I mean, I appreciate all three banks, um, being interested enough to, to want our business, and we're gonna come up for bid again in two years?
Four years.
Four years?
Yes, we can renegotiate this contract with First Financial in two years.
In two years, okay, all right.
And to add to that, uh, Texas Bank did offer us a fixed rate, but it's on CDs, and it's 3%. And the court has, has gotten a little more assertive with the investments, and we're getting better than 3% um, with the investments we have right now. Now, if rates drop again, we'll probably go below 3%, so...
Yeah, but really and truly, we're not in the money-making business.
No, no.
We're, we're in sustaining business and protecting the dollar as best we can. And I think we gotta look at it like that also, is, yeah, it's great, and it's a benefit, but it's not what our job is, is to, is to make money. Our, our job is to spend the taxpayers' money as well as we can, with as much concern as we can, and, and not really, you know, try to make money off of their money. That's not, that's not what we're supposed to be doing.
Right, and the concern with investments, according to the Public Funds Investment Act, is liquidity, security, and yield is the lowest.
Yeah.
Uh, we did consider the strength of each, of each of the financial institutions, and it's down in the second section from the bottom. We looked at capital stock, designated surplus, net income for 2022, total assets and total liabilities. And full disclosure, we did call Commissioner Raines when we were in a meeting and discussed it with him also.
Well, and that's true, well, I, I thought about it after we talked, and I thought, you know, we're really not in the money-making business. So, that should be the last thing that we worry about, the, the protection of the dollar is what we should worry about first.
And there was, and there was one that, um, that clearly was ahead in that regard, so...
Well, and I thought about this too, David, you sit here as the judge and swear people in on the jury and tell them that if they have a little bit of a doubt, that's a reasonable doubt. Things that would make you, if you have a little bit of a doubt of that dollar, then you've gotta do something that you think's right. And I mean, that's the way I look at it. If, if, if something gave you a, a tad bit of concern or second thought, then, then that ought to affect the decision that was made.
Well, and, and, uh...
Especially in today's banking market.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's why I wanted... Yeah, and I, that's, that's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to call Commissioner Raines, was to get the.
Redneck idea.
Just the baseline, you know, what, what do you think about this deal? I mean, you're, you're looking at this kinda from the outside looking in. I mean, see, he's still a commissioner, he's part of, obviously part of Commissioner's Court, but kinda outside this banking discussion, what, what's your thought on that deal? And he, uh, he, that was, uh, uh, what he expressed to us, and that, and that's what made sense, and that's why I called him. So. So that's, uh, anyway, that's who we awarded. So, if there's any discussion, they can call me. Um, H, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two hotel review. By Sonia?
And Sonia is out, she had to go home. Um, I'll, I'll go over the hotel review. This is a two-year review, we kind of got behind, and we're catching up now. And from January first, twenty twenty-one, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And I think this is impressive, because, um, the review, one hundred forty-eight checks were issued for lodging advances or reimbursements totaling forty-four thousand, one hundred eight, eighty-four dollars, forty-eight cents. And so there's, there's quite a bit of travel going on, and there's a need to make sure that everything's being done correctly. And I'm just going to read the findings, because Sonia would have presented it differently. Past reviews uncovered a need for proper documentation to be turned in with lodging advances. Since our last recommendation for purchase order documentation, this is improved. In a random sampling of the past two years of data, there were two purchase orders that did not have a zero balance receipt turned in for record. There were four purchase orders that did not contain the conference agenda. We will continue to request that a copy of the agenda, along with the hotel reservation confirmation sheet, will be required, and that each hotel purchase order thereby approving Eastland County business-related charges. Each employee and elected official then has ten days to turn in the original lodging receipt showing a zero balance on the hotel charges to the treasurer's office to be scanned into record. Treasurer payment records were verified to include itemized paid receipts from hotels. There were no variances found between the check amount and the received amount listed on the hotel confirmation or receipts. So out of one hundred forty-eight checks, two didn't have proper documentation, so everybody's doing a really good job.
Well, good enough. Thank you.
No vote for that, do we have to have a motion?
To accept it.
Have a motion to accept it? Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Judge, can I ask one more question? On G, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Were we, was there a, a need for a motion?
No, that was already done, the last.
Meeting.
The last meeting, and given us permission to make that decision on behalf of the Commissioner's Court, so.
Thank you. Okay, I think I'm called up here.
Okay.
I'm ready.
All right. No, we'll take, we'll do whatever you need to.
No, we're good.
We want you happy. Uh, I, present leave of office audit for Larry Jernigan.
And this is also in your packets, um, Sonia did the leave of office audit, um. Larry Jernigan receiveded money, but he turned in his money to the treasurer monthly, and, um, all he had to, to audit was inventory. And his invent, he turned in everything we had on record that he had possession of.
Okay. Uh, motion to accept the leave of office audit for Larry Jernigan.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Crenshaw. Any further discussions? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, J, discussing, consider road crossing agreement for County Road three twenty-eight in Precinct One, between Morton Valley Water Supply District and Eastland County, Mr. Maxwell.
This one, we'll send into your office, they, uh, just gonna cross the rail with the water line. I have two copies.
Okay. That's a pretty standard.
Yes.
Pretty standard deal. When are they gonna do that, do you know? Ah, doesn't matter, I was just wondering.
They're using pretty quick, I bet it.
It says that there are, don't think that there'd be any period of disruption for more than two hours. That's evidently a pretty quick fix. Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll, I'll make it. I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Crenshaw, second, uh.
Whatever his name is.
Yeah, Mr. Raines, I was wondering.
That ain't mine. Julie's, she's lost.
Or I'm just coming.
What do, what do we? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's make sure, I mean, the other day, we had to evacuate the darn courthouse.
Did you burn the bridge?
And I'll tell you this, I'll tell you this. It's, there is absolutely no issue evacuating this courthouse, the issue comes back is getting the employees back in the courthouse.
Like hurting cats.
These two things happened when Judge Phil's left, but Judge Phil was out in the building.
Well, I just might add that both of my admins left.
For the day?
No, they were gone, and, and I was like, I looked at, Rex was in the office. I said, I guess we need to leave, Rex, nobody's told us to.
Why was the building evacuated?
There was a, um, name's Brenda, there was some, uh, some, burned some toast or something, so the darn fire, the, the fire detector, smoke detectors are, are working great.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't hear yourself. You can't hear yourself scream.
Giving you a copy of Judge's copy.
Uh, K, discussing, consider approval for Miss Comp waiver for Justin Hoskinson for the twenty by thirty metal building at the precinct three yard.
Sorry, we got that one started late, that's to Andy, it's his copy.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Rodney, you can call while everybody's signing.
Yeah, yes, sir, this, this is about adding a building on the side of the county mornin', precinct three, Rising Star. Uh, went over there, Ja- Mr. James Crenshaw helped me with this, is what he did, the last one that he was gonna do, to waive everything, and. I just get, need to get approval, that it's all good.
Okay.
May I ask questions? Um, do you have a quote already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's there with your paper.
And if you could get him to fill in his dates and sign it?
I did.
Oh, yours does, okay.
Well, I'll give you one too, Mr. Redd, I guess they had a plan out. There's one somewhere right there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It may be underneath there, Mr. Redd, I set it down.
Okay.
How soon, how soon is he gonna start on this?
He's gonna order material, he can start within two weeks.
Well, how, what's the complexion thing?
About two weeks.
Two weeks, in front of Mike.
Yeah, he'll be done, dude, yes, sir, yep.
Is that somebody you've used before?
No, sir, we never used him before, I went and looked at some of his stuff, he's done, but he's real good.
Okay. Where's he at, though?
Rising Star.
Okay. Good deal. I like the fact that you're using somebody from Rising Star.
Yeah, I tried to, and I was gonna, uh, use the man that James does, cause he does outstanding work too, but he's pretty far behind, and this boy, it's that he can get right on it.
Good deal.
So I'm trying to get it done before the year's gone.
How's yours coming, though?
Uh, he should be, should be through in the next day or two.
Oh, cool, yeah, I'd love to.
Last little bit of material.
Yeah, I'd like to come and see that.
Messed up, not ordering, well, I couldn't order all the materials at one time, because it was different cuts and stuff like that on some of the trim and stuff like that. And in between, when I got the bid to, to now, evidently it went up, so.
Yeah.
It's costing me just a little bit more than.
Well, I don't know that it's going down anytime soon. All right, L?
We need a motion.
Oh, motion, uh, to approve.
I'll make it.
I'll submit.
Motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. L, emergency amendments.
None.
None. Okay, number five.
You have that too.
Mr. Raines. Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor of German, say aye. Here we go. One, well, actually, less than that. Forty-two minutes. Well, we, if we didn't have those photo ops, we could have, we could have.